This is City of Grand Prairie regular council meeting for Monday, September 23rd. This is the second half of our council meeting. The first half with committee business was earlier in the day. And we're back for scheduled delegations, of which we had a few. And then delegation business and council member reports. Recognize that there's lots of people here this evening. I certainly appreciate you all being here. I would note that we had three delegations let us know in advance that they wish to schedule time with council. We do have two delegation opportunities at our city council meetings. One is an open delegation earlier in the afternoon where anybody's welcome to come and address council. This evening delegation is intended to be for scheduled delegations who let us know ahead of time. But we are happy to hear from people and pleased to see there's so many people in the room. So we'll start with those that let us know ahead of time that they wish to book some time with council. And the first was representatives from the Grand Prairie Fast Pitch Association. Are there representatives from Grand Prairie Fast Pitch? If you'd like to make your way forward, and as you sit yourselves at the presenters table, if there's an extra chair, I'm sure we can roll one over somewhere. If you would just introduce anybody that's joining you at the microphone. We like to give our presentations about five minutes typically. So, welcome.
Thanks, Mayor Given. My name's Paul Terry and I was the chair of the host committee for Men's and Masters Canadian Fast Pitch Championships. With me here is Shane Milligan, who was in charge of our sponsorship crew, and Karna Girmshaid, who was in charge of sponsorship and looking after all of our many donors and everyone who helped out with the organization. So, we're here, we scheduled time with council here this evening to thank the city for its participation and its support to our Men's and Masters Men's Canadian Fast Pitch Championship. We were able to host a national event. For the first time, we hosted the men's championships in our city and it went off incredibly well. We were thrilled at the participation from our community, thrilled at the event that we were able to host. And so I just wanted to share a few messages with council, notably from Softball Canada. Softball Canada made mention that our tournament was one of the top three-run tournaments of any men's and masters men's national tournament that they had been to. These were people who were involved in this sport for the past 25 years. So to be mentioned along the same lines as some of the best tournaments in the world is, was remarkable. We were very proud of our team and we were proud to be associated with the city and especially the grounds crew, the men and women who were working tirelessly to keep the grounds ready for our games and got the Diamonds ready for our championship down at South Bear Creek. So we were thrilled and very honored to have had them participate with us and to do so much work for us. So, we're very thankful to the city for that. In all, we had just a few pieces of, some facts about the event. We had 6,000 attendees attend our event over the course of five days, many of them from out of town. And so we were able to bring a lot of new faces into our community. All of them had very positive things to say about our facility and about the city when they came in, so we're thrilled.
Anything else to add from the rest of your team?
I guess I could add a little tidbit from a player's perspective, because I was actually on the host team playing in the event. And from the player's perspective, the facility was in fantastic shape. So, again, thank you very much to the grounds crew and the city workers that came to the table and made it great. And we got a lot of positive feedback from the out-of-town teams as well. We had a lot of compliments saying that it was a well-run tournament and the facility was great.
And I would just like to add, I know that the process has been about three years since Shane here submitted the bid to Softball Canada. But an event like this, we did a predictive STEAM report on the economic impact of such an event. And it's upwards of $440,000 for the city of Grand Prairie and it increases when you include the region and of course, the province. So, these events are extraordinarily important to us, but this crew, this committee did an exceptional job and as a Grand Prairiean, I'm very proud of it and I think we put our best face forward for this one.
Great. Thank you to you three for being here and presenting this evening. I have an opportunity for questions from council members. Councilor Bressi.
Great. Well, first I just want to say thank you to all of you. I know an event like this doesn't happen without countless hours from many, many, many volunteers. So, thank you. I often get, as you can imagine, we get approached by a lot of groups wanting funding and support for various things. And the ball community is often an example of what I point to for if they want me to support the city supporting them. The ball community really is one that believes in giving back with its work and raising sponsorship and all of that. So, on behalf of your community, thank you for that. A question I did have for you is, about a week ago, one of our committees received a delegation from the Slow Pitch Association and they were talking about South Bear Creek Park and improvements they think could help make it a better tournament facility. I'm just kind of curious if there's any big needs you guys see at South Bear Creek Park? If so, what those are? Or if you guys feel it's pretty good for an event of your caliber? Just maybe what you guys think after having lived in this facility for a big event?
I'll ask Shane to speak as well. South Bear, South Bear Creek Park is an amazing facility in the way that it's set up. There's no, there are very few places like it left across the country. Most ballparks have gone to big open fields with, so if you go across the road from South Bear Creek where the Diamonds four through 10 are, that's what every facility looks like across Canada. And so, Diamonds 1, 2, 3 where you have that one kind of central intimate location where everything is kind of protected by trees and sheltered and it really feels like a ballpark, is something unique and something that even people who lived in our city a long time and not been down there are really impressed by the facility. So the facility itself is worth, is worth keeping intact as much as possible. I'm not familiar with what the recommendation was or what the ask was, but definitely Diamonds 1, 2, 3 are, you wouldn't want to change the composition of those or how those are organized. The one aspect for us that would make running tournaments and events like this even easier would be regards to lighting. Lighting in that facility was something that we had approached the city in the large-scale tourism grant, helped us secure temporary lighting for the facility, which made a huge difference and really brought the park up to the standards we need to play such a high-level event. So, in terms of upgrades, I believe the biggest need for 1, 2, and 3 would be 1, 2 to upgrade those lights. And if, if lights are able to be put in on 3, that would, that would increase the ability there even more to host even larger events.
I think a couple of things. First, upgrades, that facility is built on an old landfill. So with the ground shifting, it's, you're constantly fighting, heaving and shifting. So that's, that's one thing. And for Diamonds 1, 2, and 3, well, not necessarily 3, but 1 and 2, those are set up for fastball. The dimensions are smaller than the slow pitch Diamonds would be. So as far as, you know, for slow pitch, I believe they would just need bigger fields, potentially more. And I know, I know what they're looking for is something where they can host a large-scale event, like a national, national event to bring the out-of-town teams and revenue into the city. So, I think, I think that's everyone's goal is to, to have a facility that we can, a top-notch facility that we can host larger events.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Councilor Bressi. I see Councilor O'Toole also had a question.
No questions, just a comment. I was only going to go down there for a little while and ended up spending the whole weekend there. So, I gotta tell you, I didn't go to a few things that my family wanted me to go to, but the quality of fastball down there was awesome. And when I sat in the bleachers, I know for sure that everything that you said was true. There was people from Edmonton drove up to watch. And I said, "Why is that?" And they said, "Grand Prairie's a great place and there's going to be good fastball there." So they spent their weekend up here. So, and there's lots of places, there are lots of residents from B.C., Alberta, and Saskatchewan that I sat with. And it kind of blew me out of the water because I didn't think that it would attract that many people and from that distance. There's other people that flew in with the teams, but I did ask the referee or the umpires and the officials and Softball Canada what they thought of the facility and what was there. And they said, "Native fastball championships are coming up. You should be bidding on those." And the Worlds are coming up and we would like you to, we'd like someone to host them and we'd like Grand Prairie to be there. So, I don't know if you can call that a bouquet or not, but you guys did a great job. So thank you for your team and it was a success as far as I'm concerned. And I enjoyed being there at the closing ceremonies. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. I see Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks, Karna, Shane, and Paul for a lot of work that you did on this. And it was a, it was a great event and it was something that Grand Prairie can be very proud of. I'm just kind of curious on the, you had 6,000 attendees. When you guys were starting the event, what was your hope? Like what was, what was the number you guys were forecasting or hoping to get?
500 a day. And we blew that out of the water. So, we've over-doubled that.
Okay. Well, it seemed like a lot of people, so congratulations. I just wanted to say well done and hopefully you guys can keep the band together and get another event to Grand Prairie. It'd be great.
That's the goal. That's the plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Plott. So I don't see anybody else in the queue. So I guess on behalf of council, as shared by some of the others, congratulations on a really well-run event. Thank you so much for doing so much that reflected very, very well on our community. Appreciate that work and we're happy to be able to partner with you.
Thank you very much for your time. On behalf of our association, we do have a thank you plaque for, for the city, for your generous generosity and your support through this. So I'll present that on the way out.
Maybe Shane will accept that as you head out and we'll make sure that we place it somewhere prominent in City Hall. Thanks so much. Thanks again for your work. Okay, our next delegation that let us know ahead of time that they wished to present was Mr. Christopher Arcand. Mr. Arcand, you sort of saw the routine. We'll give you about five minutes or so to make a presentation to council and then have an opportunity for council to ask any questions they might have of you. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Good evening, council. For those who don't know me, my name's Chris Arcand. I am here today to talk about an issue that I believe is most rampant and that it's not just affecting our community, but our country and actually, North America as a whole. I come here today as a taxpayer, a young conservative Canadian citizen, safety coordinator, and moreoverly, loving father and husband. Now before I get started, I want to say beforehand that I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and the opportunity to speak to everyone here. I want to clear the air that not all homeless individuals in Grand Prairie are junkies or thieves. We do have a housing crisis that we are facing, plus the current cost of living is just astronomical. So I guess my topic tonight is supervised consumption sites enable, promotes illegal activity and affects most of our vulnerable. And I'm referring to children and teenagers. In neurons, as in life, first impressions matters. People keep on doing what their brain tells them is highly rewarding, often past the point where it is still pleasurable or beneficial. Addicts want something that they have seized liking it, even if they realize its harmful effects. Researchers identified common risk factors, genetic variations in life circumstances, so stress, social defeat, neglect or abuse during critical periods of brain development make some people more susceptible to addiction than others. They feel uncomfortable or depressed until they've discovered that alcohol, drugs, sugar gambling, computer games, or some other thrilling behavior temporarily vanishes their blues. Frequent resort to these substances and behaviors further damages their neural control systems and often other parts of their brain. This is just part, an excerpt from a book I'm reading called "The Age of Addiction: How Bad Habits Became Big Net Business" by David T. Courtwright. According to our community via Facebook, over 60% of people who engaged in a poll that I created are against supervised consumption sites. 30% are more so against tent city and social impacts that seem to go hand-in-hand with tent cities. So, increased drug paraphernalia found in drugs in public spaces and increased crime. 7% are for, for the consumption sites just for what they have to offer, the resources to the community as well as saving lives. And the remaining 3% or more or less had other information regarding if it were, they were just unsure how they felt about it. So we are a community divided, but we need to start working together now to help clean up the mess we are in and to lead by example. It's 2019 and we are in the era of protect the guilty and silence speech from anyone with an opposing view. This crisis we're dealing with has no political spectrum. We need to stop the divide, work together and come up with a solution. It has been well documented that we, that we internationally are experiencing the increased use of opiates on a scale we never thought we'd see again. One of my favorite quotes and which I've always loved is, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." The first time the opiates were on the rise was in the 1960s and 70s where heroin made its way into inner cities and affected many families' lives. It wasn't considered an epidemic or a crisis at the time, it was just when opioids had the spotlight. The second time drugs predominantly ravaged communities happened in the 1980s and lasted until the mid 90s. The crack epidemic happened at a time when cocaine was popular. Dealers wanted to increase profit by making it cheaper while crack was invented. Once crack entered the inner cities, it once again tore families apart, gang culture increased and crime increased astronomically. In 1982, Ronald Reagan doubled down on Richard Nixon's war on drugs. Drug offenders face lifetime consequences for minor infractions, yet focused on tough sentences for crack and not powdered cocaine. And the people who were going to prison were largely African-American, just because of the inner cities. Reagan declared that illicit drugs were a direct threat to U.S. national security and though a series of legislation like the mandatory minimum sentencing laws in 1986, it's actually the year cocaine was actually, became illegal, made a hard rate turn away from a public health approach to drug use. With the increase of crime in the U.S. at the time sparked an increase in hate crimes and police brutality, i.e. Rodney King, 1991. I could go into the Violent Crime Law Enforcement Act 1994 signed by Bill Clinton, but then I'm just going to go off-topic. In 2016, 2017, it was noted that in the U.S. 130 people a day died from opioid-related deaths. In August 2017, Attorney General Jeff Sessions announced the launch of an opioid fraud abuse detection unit within the Department of Justice. This unit's mission is to prosecute individuals who commit opioid-related healthcare fraud. The Department of Justice is also a U.S. attorney who will specialize in opioid healthcare fraud cases against of a three-year pilot program in 12 jurisdictions nationwide. On October 24th, 2018, President Donald Trump signed opioid legislation law into, legislation into law. The Support for Patients and Communities Act includes provisions aimed in promoting research to find new drugs for pain management that will not be addictive. It also expands the access to treatment for substance use disorders for Medicaid patients. That source is CNN. The one positive thing that we can take away from North America's histories on drugs from the 80s and 90s is that we could be in for another great generation of rap music. The era is upon us where the Annoy F.A. crisis apparent for a few years. In Alberta, I personally noticed that has spiked since 2015 in the economic downturn. Our government bodies, municipal, provincial, and federal believe that a solution is to enable drug addicts supervised consumption sites by providing clean needles and community resources, which I'm not saying is a bad thing. However, taxpayers' dollars are being spent to save the lives of the users and abusers. Once again, that's what they're designed to do, but you're putting a bandage on a gash. Many individuals that suffer from common diseases such as diabetes, cancers, heart disorders, et cetera, must pay for their medication out of pocket and could potentially die if they don't have their medications. Drug use is a choice 99% of the time. It's not a disease. To ensure a decline, we need our judicial system to do their job, to serve and protect our communities by policing our streets. Rehabilitation on this crisis has to start in prison where an individual can detox and be properly be educated. Our government needs to invest billions into mental health and proper education, not hand billions to foreign countries and foreign aid. We need to take care of ourselves first. When I saw a couple of weeks ago on Facebook, a couple of junkies shooting up outside our local library, which is just by our CMP building, I was appalled. Children and teens are seeing this. Do these peoples face any charges? Most likely not. Our city spends public tax dollars protecting drug addicts by giving them public property to have tents, fence from the general public, and protected by security, and having a place where people can bring illegal drugs with them to shoot up. Sounds like a great message for our youth. You can do anything you want in life with no legal consequences. You can steal and not be prosecuted. You can carry heroin and not be arrested. Heck, you can even murder someone in Canada and be out in five years. But as a law-abiding citizen, I can speed 10 kilometers an hour over the speed limit and get fined. I can be in prison if I don't pay my taxes and have the law catch up to me that way. The supervised consumption sites may have X amount of lives saved for now, but the vulnerable individuals that may be influenced by their environment is not the risk we should take. Children are and have been proven time and time again throughout history that they can, they can and may will become a product of their environment. We need action now. Our municipal, provincial, and federal bodies need to act. Forget about the upcoming election, it's time our governments and oppositions put their differences aside and work together. Police our streets and educate. That is my personal solution. It's not a bandage, it's a stitch. The healing will be pushing funds into education and mental health. So how are supervised consumption sites, tent city, and the opioid crisis related? If you look outside City Hall here, you will see needles, stolen goods, and individuals outweigh for the sun to go down to start on their next hustle to earn money for the next fix. Our downtown area is turning into Grand Prairie's own East Hastings. Many will disagree and find fault with my beliefs, but you must understand it comes from a good place. When you have children, you don't want them to get caught up in the dope game. I don't want my community to keep suffering. I want to help find a solution to the opioid crisis regardless of political stance. I care deeply and though your opinion may differ from mine, something needs to be done now. And yeah, I just want to thank council for letting me be here. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Absolutely. Any questions for the delegation? No, Councilor Bressi.
Thanks for coming in. I always appreciate when we've got people that will all come and speak to us and speak in person. I appreciate that type of engagement. I was kind of curious, I think that you do point out to a lot of problems in our society in terms of underinvestment in mental health. I think it's the biggest issue fueling this problem right now and some other reforms that need to be happening in the criminal justice system and elsewhere. I think something that municipalities really struggle with is when senior levels of government aren't fulfilling their obligations, how should we respond? And healthcare very much is a provincial responsibility, I'd suggest, not a municipal responsibility. And I'd suggest that there should be more investment in it from senior levels of government. I'm glad to see that we've, that our government's promised to do that and I'm hopeful that it'll have a big impact on our community. But in the meantime, municipalities, when they see a gap, need to decide, do we just let the problem continue to exist in our community or do we overstep our boundaries and invest in ourselves? Which of course means that if we're doing that and other communities aren't, our taxes are higher than other communities. So I'm kind of curious what your take on is in terms of you're identifying these gaps, you're pointing these gaps out to council. But what are your feelings in terms of, should we be investing city money in addressing these problems? Or should we just be doubling down our advocacy efforts to have other levels of government investing in them?
Mr. Arcand?
Thanks, Dylan. I really appreciate the question. So, my solution to that is it's more so I'm just bringing awareness to the issue that faces our community and it's something that is very rampant in our society in general as a whole. For, on my take, it's just more so try to push government, both provincial and federal, to bring awareness to this and as well try to push for funding. It's just, I guess, something you can't do, like it's something that our city tax dollars, it's not, I personally don't think is something that should be going into healthcare in general. That's like you said, it's provincial responsibility.
I see Councilor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, Mr. Arcand, for coming today. And I know that you said it's coming from a good place and I know that that is the case as it is with everyone who's speaking on Facebook, on social media, and also, you know, the phone calls that we get and the emails that we get. Everyone is concerned and I think it's fair to say that everyone on council is as well. So I appreciate that you're even showing up in person today and you've obviously put a lot of thought and study into this. And I'm just building on Councilor Bressi, he did say some of what I wanted to say about the, you know, other levels of government that have responsibilities beyond what a municipality can, can get their hands around. And I heard you mention that while you were reading. And I know personally, I'm advocating with our MLAs, actually for a tri-ministerial approach, which would be justice, healthcare, and social services. And I think that those going hand-in-hand with the issues that we're seeing that are creating problems throughout Alberta and across the country. So my, but my question for you is, you know, was there any particular ask of the city beyond, you know, what we've already done in, in providing a more specific space for folks to be rather than, you know, with some amenities that help keep things a little cleaner than they were prior to bringing them over beside City Hall? Was there any further ask that you would want from the city or something else that might be a suggestion that is within our mandate to do?
Thanks, Councilor Friesen. Appreciate the question. So, my thought process on this was just to, I know the city's been working really hard with this and I do appreciate it, especially moving it from Rotary House. Like the city looks a lot cleaner in that aspect, especially when you're driving, it's not so noticeable. You want to, if you want to put it that way, I guess. But I guess the main part of my speech is just more so just, it's, it's almost, where do we go from there, especially as a community? We have lots of young families here, lots of children and stuff, and especially as a young father. It's just trying to get that stigma, almost, I shouldn't say remove, you can't remove any problem, but it's almost as if, as this community, if we can almost, I just want to bring more, push, try to push funding towards like our judicial system and healthcare to help, I guess, all communities. If, if our judicial system is supposed to rehabilitate people, then how come it's, we have a poor track record as a country, I guess? Not so much community.
Thank you. And I, and I think, I'm assuming here, but with the study that you've done and the approach that you're taking, I suspect you're meeting also with your local politicians of other levels of government. We do our advocacy and we really appreciate it when residents are doing theirs as well. So thank you again, Mr. Arcand.
Thank you.
I see Councilor Tools in the queue. I just wanted to ask one question, Mr. Arcand. You mentioned in there in terms of funding from different levels of government and it seemed as though you were including the municipal government in terms of funding the SDS. Were you under the impression that the city is providing funding for that operation?
It was just more so, it was just trying to bring awareness for provincial and federal on that level, in that sense, for funding.
Sure. Yeah. And just in terms of awareness, I think really important to ensure that people have the right information.
Yes.
And the city of Grand Prairie provides no operational funding for the SCS and that's actually fully provincially and federally funded, just to make sure that that awareness gets out there. Councilor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given, and thank you very much for being here. Your words have been heard. Some of us tonight will be heading to Edmonton to advocate amongst the politicians out there, provincial ministers and stuff like that. So, I can tell you, every one of us has heard this concern time after time after time and we're frustrated that we're, we're doing as much as we can possibly do at this time. But we, our hands are tied as well. And, but we're trying to, we're trying to alleviate most of the issues that you had brought up. So, thank you for bringing that to us and we're going to still fight, we're going to still try and do as much as we can. And not everybody there is bad people. Some of them have just had a bad string of bad luck and we've got to treat everybody with the most amount of respect we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. That being the case, thanks very much for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Okay. Our last delegation that let us know ahead of time that they wished to present was QB Local 787. If you'd like to make your way forward, and again, you've sort of seen the routine a couple of times. I know, we know, are familiar with a few of you, but if you'd wish to introduce your delegation and anybody that's going to be speaking. And again, you sort of saw the routine, approximately five minutes, and then we'll have some time for questions from council. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor Given. To my left is Kim Rochon, member of the Executive. And to my far left is our QB Division Alberta President Rory Gill. Rory Gill, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Givens. It's great to be with all of you here. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present you tonight and be with you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight and be with everyone, including the citizens of Grand Prairie. As Randy said, my name is Rory Gill and I'm president of the Alberta Division of the Canadian Union of Public Employees. QP Alberta represents 38,000 Albertans in a variety of sectors, including health, education, hospitality, social services, airlines and of course municipalities. Not only is QP the largest union in Canada with nearly 700,000 members, we truly are the preeminent union when it comes to municipalities. We represent members in literally tens of thousands of municipalities from coast to coast to coast. I myself have a municipal background, before I started doing union work, I was a foreman in the city of Calgary Parks Department, started in 1997, dating myself a little bit. But given that experience, I like to think I have some understanding of municipal services and their importance to citizens. Now, very shortly I will turn things back over to Randy, who I'm sure you all know is role as president of QP Local 787. But I do first want to provide a little bit of perspective on that QP has. Our union started in 1963, so we've got basically 56 years of perspective and direct experience on the importance of public services in the municipal level. And QP has also done extensive research in comparison on the cost of contracting out public services. Now, in almost every single case, what we found is that municipal officials have come to regret a decision to privatize or contract out services and many of them have worked to reverse those decisions and bring the services that were contracted out back in house. Now, for-profit contractors by definition make profit their primary goal and this is a perfectly legitimate thing if you're in a commercial venture or a private venture. But municipal services are fundamentally different and they're fundamentally different thing. And in QP, we believe that the public services should be for the good of all and not for the profit of a few. And we believe that the necessary services that are provided for the public good should be available to all citizens and that for-profit contractors, again, by the nature of having to be, be responsible to their shareholders and their bottom line, are simply not able to provide the broad spectrum of services that we require in the municipal context. Public assets are very often not protected. Public interests very often come second, again, to the, what we talked about being the bottom line. And in the end, as I say, private corporations have to think about staying in business and they don't have the perspective that we find in public services at the municipal, provincial and federal level. We believe that if you look through the brief that we're providing to you tonight, that you'll see that there's good hard data that backs all this up and Randy will give you more perspective on that in the Grand Prairie context. And I would also like, before I conclude my remarks, to point out that when we're talking about private privatization and contracting out, very often, you know, it's fiscally driven. Revenues, especially in the context of Alberta, can be particularly tight, you know, and elected officials are very often trying to find, you know, cost savings. But what we found time and time again is that those cost savings aren't reflected in the data, they aren't reflected in the experience of municipalities that do contract out services. And again, in the, in the documents and their literature that we've provided tonight, one of which is called back in house, why governments are bringing services home, you'll find a list of municipalities that went down the route of contracting out and privatizing services and have brought those back in. Now, I do want to give just a couple of examples of right here in Alberta, where we saw municipalities that decided to privatize, to contract out services and changed that, changed that decision very recently. In Banff, Alberta, ending in 2014, the town council there decided that they were going to end their relationship with Epcore in 2014. They saw an immediate savings in the very first year of $350,000. If, you know, those of you have been to Banff, you know the size of the municipality. Serious, serious resources for a municipality that size. Fort McMurray, Alberta, they decided after, after examination to end their relationship with a private contractor for public transportation. They've since seen an increase in revenue of $1.2 million. And finally, very close to home for me, as I say, I live in Calgary. Very recently, the city of Calgary decided to end the private enforcement of, of parking regulations through the Parking Authority and they've seen a substantial increase in citizen satisfaction and understanding of parking regulations because they have direct control over those services. Now, as I mentioned before, in the literature you've got tonight in the documents and Randy will talk more about this, there's more and more examples that contracting out, as enticing as it can seem in the, in the short term, does not provide long-term savings and it also leaves municipalities in a situation where they lose that control. And just, I do want to give a direct example, as I said, I've been with the city of Calgary for 22 years. In 2013, I was working in the field as a foreman in the Parks Department when we were struck down by the 2013 flood. Up to that time, it was the most expensive disaster in the history of Canada. And I can say that it was a long two to three weeks and, you know, and lots of, lots of time spent, but the fact that Calgary is the least contracted out major municipality in the country showed in the response we had during that disaster. We were able to respond quickly, effectively, working with people throughout the community, volunteers, provincial, federal resources. But I know as a frontline leader, as a foreman, that we knew what we were doing, we knew where to do it. And I can give you one example, my, my coworkers in roads were able to restore a section of McLeod Trail downtown in less than 24 hours that had been washed out from start to finish. I was slightly involved in that, I led the crews that cleared the roadways because of course the parks guys were the only ones with, with chainsaw tickets. So we were the ones, but we were there and we were able to turn it around. So I do ask you, you know, and Randy, we'll get right into the Grand Prairie context right away here, but I do ask you to consider the control you have as public officials. And I know all of you are in this role and you're in this room here tonight because you care about Grand Prairie, you care about the people here and you care about their services. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight.
Thank you Rory. Thank you Mayor and council. And like, like Rory said, I'm speaking to you as president of QP Local 787, addressing concerns about contracting out and privatization of public service, recognizing the importance of keeping services in-house. Share with you information that public services are proven to be cost-effective and transparent way to provide services. I, as a city employee along with the rest of Local 787, have been working hard to make sure our municipality is the best it can be. As your employee, we care about the public services that the city of Grand Prairie offers. We are proud of these, of the services. We are proud at how they make our city a better place to live. These services are widely used by residents of Grand Prairie. So when services are being looked at from a privatization view, the end result is increased costs and limit municipalities oversight and control. Recently, the local became aware through the Alberta Purchasing Connection of requests for proposals, services in, proposals, services in home support, snow clearing and ice control services at various facilities. It's the understanding there, there could be more and like, I should say, be more likely would be future requests. In regard to sending out expresses, expressions of interest or requests for proposals in other departments, which include daycare, parks, recreation, transit, we have grave concerns. This is the direction the city of Grand Prairie is looking, is looking at taking. This neglects due diligence and permanently rules out the public operation of services. Like Rory has mentioned, has outlined some privatization reversals from around Alberta and the information you have been given about similar contracting in that has happened across Canada, I just currently want to talk about some local examples that happened here. On pages five and six of your brief that was handed to council members, you'll see examples of contracting out and the results the city of Grand Prairie itself had experienced. May 1988, sanitary landfill site, weight scale, city was looking for a contractor to manage the site. Local 787 warned about the corruption of contracting out of certain wastes and the city agreed to keep those, those services in-house and now have been provided by QP members that belong to our unit Aqua Terra. November 20, 2002, day bar community center and twin ice arenas resulted in the services being run in-house, again, due to health and safety concerns and staffing concerns. Health and safety and staffing concerns. And most recently, winter 2017, 2018, snow removal, which has resulted in lower quality, unreliable service and complaints from residents regarding the residential snow removal. In addition to costing more and delivering poor services, contracting out opens the business contracts to the lowest bidder, which doesn't reward good governance. It puts private patronage above public services and, and this needs to be rejected. The local strongly urges the city to reconsider any plans of contracting out these valuable public services and to continue to provide them in-house. We believe as a local that transparency is crucial and that there needs to be a full public debate about the costs and consequences of contracting out. The local is more than willing to work with the city to achieve this, knowing the difficulty we are, we are facing going forward and more than ever, the importance of maintaining quality public services. Let's learn from our own mistakes from here in Grand Prairie and the mistakes of other municipalities. Let's work together to make our services better, more efficient and above all, more responsive to our public's needs. City council must carefully study public, public option and the city must develop a fully costed, unbiased comparison of in-house and privatized operation and maintenance Grand Prairie citizens deserve the right to see all options, including one that can ensure the city's hands aren't tied to contracts with for-profit corporations. Public operation means more flexibility and control. And when doing this, it will let the city build on its internal expertise. Grand Prairie residents have already paid for the equipment to use to provide these services and we have the trained staff. These services belong to the city. Let's continue to operate and provide these services ourselves. So enclosed in the local wants to repeat, municipal services belong in public hands. There's no room for profit in delivering these services. So we hope the mayor and the rest of city council slow down, take a step back and do their due diligence instead of repeating our cost and mistakes from the past. Again, these services serve our communities well. We owe them, let's continue to hold these public services as assets and not auction them off. So at this time, thanks for your time and opportunity to present today.
Thanks very much gentlemen. So an opportunity for any questions for the delegation. I see councillor Pilat.
Thanks Mayor Given, thanks for coming in today guys. It was a good, it's nice to have the package so we can, with leaves and some traveling notes as well. Just a question, I guess Randy, when you were talking there, you, you kept talking about you want to see transparency and options. And I guess I'm just curious how council can work with administration to make sure we give the community the best option if we're not looking at industry sometimes? If we're always looking in-house, how is that being transparent and how giving, how is that giving our community options?
Oh, that's a good question.
And just Randy, well, just so you can get a second to think about it, when you, you know, I guess that's a, that's a big question throughout here. I guess the reason I'm asking as a councillor is, you know, for, for two years we've been, we hear a lot of things from the community and taxes come up a lot. And so we're tasked with how we can find a way to find savings. And so we work diligently with administration. Administration works very hard on making sure that they're going to propose changes that they think will not have a huge impact on the city. So I'm just trying to figure out when, you know, we're trying to figure out ways to be transparent because that's what a lot of this council wants to be very transparent. Just how we are allowed to and capable of going out and finding options that might be the best fit for the community and doing that in a transparent way that doesn't always involve and make it, right now we're kind of sole sourced on everything.
I guess I could, thank you for that councillor. I guess what I'm, what I would say is it's, is you have the expertise and the knowledge within, within the workforce. It may be just coming out and talking to members, understanding their roles and responsibilities. There's a lot of, like I say, these are front, we are frontline workers, we doing the work upfront and maybe that's something we made, you know, that's something we could look at is coming out and seeing what deficiencies, efficiencies that we can provide, right? I think that's something that we could look at too, so.
See councillor Friesen?
Um.
Sorry, any additional questions? Go ahead.
I, I apologize Mayor Given. Just, just to your point councillor Pilat, and I think you've asked a good question. One thing when we talk about transparency is, you know, there's the transparency of what a cost would be provided by a private contractor. One of the things we've been trying to emphasize tonight is, is that full transparency because a, you know, a private provider can come and say, it'll cost X. What we'd like to do is, is look at the total picture. I mean, one would hope that, you know, a contractor was coming forward, that they would have some track record and we'd like that track record examined because we truly believe that once you get past the dollars and cents, which, which are absolutely important, we're not trying to minimize those, but you get back to the service aspect of it, we find that whatever aspect and whatever services that are provided, it's, it's that quality and it's also the responsiveness. So when Randy and Local 787 are talking about full transparency, they're talking about the track record, the, the delivery of the service and, and the history behind it and what'll be the ultimate result. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to that.
Okay, councillor Friesen, sorry.
Thank you Mayor and thank you gentlemen for coming in and I do understand that you have a contingency who is very concerned about this matter. As you mentioned very specifically, you mentioned daycare, not to put too fine a point on it, but I would guess that that is where the majority of the support in the gallery comes tonight to, they're concerned about. So my, my question is, the city has very limited availability of daycare relative to what is in the community. So speaking to that track record of responsiveness and quality, I believe are the two words that you used just now speaking with, responding to councillor Pilat Rory. And are, are we to understand there then that it is generally the position of QP that the city's responsiveness and quality in this matter would be superior to all of, or the majority of private and nonprofit daycares that are otherwise available in our community? Just want to compare, you know, be talking about apples to apples rather than snow removal or the things that are generally accepted to be municipal responsibilities. I'm not sure that daycare fits necessarily in that generally accepted municipal responsibility. And I went through the, the back in house from 2014 or 15, I believe it was, maybe even 16. And only one of those 15 examples throughout are, is what I would consider comparable to daycare because it is not generally, and that was the cafeteria in Wood Buffalo. It's not generally accepted to be a municipal responsibility. So when we're talking about something like that, how, what different considerations would you allow a council for those kinds of things? And, and then again, my, my initial question is the, is the position then that a city in those kinds of things could be more responsive and have higher quality in general than all the other options in the community?
Gentlemen?
That's a good question. I'm not sure to answer that councillor. I guess I just, in a broader sense, what I'm, what we're trying to come across is, or come, come across to council is that we're here to, number one is to look after our locals' membership. That's number one thing that we're looking for. I honestly, like, to be honest, I could not even, I could not speak to you regarding the level of service. I do know I have spoken to, all I can, what I can say is though I do have spoken to our members in, in this facility and they do a wonderful job. It's, what they do is, I, I could not do it myself and it's, it's, they're not, it's, they provide a wonderful service, but I'm, unfortunately I could not guarantee, I know it's, I could not tell you if it's, if it's better, better or not, I unfortunately I can't. So.
If I might, councillor Friesen, I think you asked, you know, a very pertinent question. When we look at what the provision of services through municipality is, yeah, I would say I think you're broadly accurate that daycare services are not what we would consider, you know, the broad remit of municipal services, but this council's made a decision that that was one service that they were going to provide. I would get back to the ability, you know, tax dollars, you know, municipal tax dollars, municipal resources will be going into this program. The level of control that the people around this table would have is enhanced when you have, when you have a direct relationship with the employees. I'd also say that QP represents one of the many sectors we represent, of course, childcare. Fewer in Alberta, but we've got great experience across the country. Again, the research has showed us, and you mentioned the nonprofit, if we compare it to for-profit, again, there's dedicated workers there, but again, there's a profit motive. Even if we compare it to the not-for-profit model, again, a publicly delivered childcare service is more responsive and in our experience and also is able to, again, because profit is not involved, you know, focus on the childcare itself. And again, the folks around this table, your resources are going in, so again, it comes back to the control you have. Once you start a hands-off relationship or an arms-length relationship, your ability to, you know, turn around, figure out what those services are, you know, and change them if you need to, is going to be constrained.
See councillor Bressi.
Great. Hey, thanks for, thanks for coming in. I appreciate the back-end house document you guys gave us. I got that in my very first AUMA when I was a brand-new councillor and it's sitting on my desk and I've read it a couple of times and I'm a guy that really tries to go after data and real-world stories. That's been helpful to me. I've visited it a couple of times and I'm excited to dig through this. So thank you for giving us stuff to back up as we're considering what you guys are saying. I know for me, it's, it is a tough conversation in terms of, I, I'm really proud to work for this organization and it's the first time I've worked for a big organization and it's the first time I've ever worked with colleagues that are actually in the same city as me. And I'm very proud of the people that I get to, get to work with and we give really great programs. And I really struggle for, when we were talking about control in the last question, councillor Friesen stole a lot of my thunder, we were doing that back and forth today, but it's, I really struggle of what's the role of control we want to keep, what's the role of quality we need to keep, but also there is the fiscal side of it too. And I guess kind of a pitch I want to make to QP is I think there's a place where we're allies and that is, I suspect you're having lots of conversations with our provincial government right now as well. And, yeah. But I just want to make a, make a pitch that I hope that municipal funding is a consideration in those conversations you guys are trying to have as well, where, I don't know what the rest of councils, but I know my desire isn't to see budget cuts and service cuts in this community. My desire is to basically keep up with inflation and I'm even willing to see some increases if it's because we're offering more childcare spaces or offering more initiatives to help our vulnerable residents like we just talked about or doing a better job of our roads. That being said, if we've got millions and millions and millions of dollars in our budget we need to fill all of a sudden, or if I see other needs in our community that's being left vacant and I'm feeling we need to step up and help, help some, fill some of those needs, especially of our vulnerable residents, all of a sudden, our budget becomes a lot more difficult for me and I honestly don't know where I'm, where I'm going till I see what that looks like. So I just want to make a pitch that I hope this is something, we're going to AUMA, AUMA this week to advocate and do our part, but I also just want to make a pitch that municipal employees are very much affected by the provincial budget as well and I hope that that gets remembered as you guys are having your conversations with the province.
Thanks councillor Bressi. I see councillor Clayton's in the queue. I was just going to ask a question of you and this might be for you, Ron. Does QP have any research capacity? You know, there've been a number of examples, you've mentioned a few here where the city has outsourced things, but we've also had a number of recent examples where the city's in-source. Obviously, the most recent is with accessible transit. Prior to that, the full transit service was previously a contractor that the city brought in-house and actually had, it was, I hope you all appreciated it as well, when the presentation from Fastball was here, talking about the great condition of the diamonds because that was, that was actually previously done by a not-for-profit community agency. So does QP have any research capacity nationally or in the organization that would allow us to look at those real live examples from Grand Prairie's context to say, what would that have looked like if it had continued to be outsourced rather than being brought in-house? Is there an opportunity to partner in analyzing some of those recent examples?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor Given. And, you know, if there's a desire in the, on, from the city of Grand Prairie, you know, to work with QP and partner with us on such a research project, I think that's a very interesting suggestion. I'm glad you brought it up. We've got, I'm biased, I think QP is the best union there is and I think our research, our research division is.
Careful, I saw one of the firefighters come in.
Yeah, I know.
So you never know how that's going to.
Tied, we were tied. But yeah, our research department is second to none and I think, I know, there's a couple of people just popped in my head who'd be very interested in that kind of project. So if council desires and wants to work through Randy, just let us know and I'm sure we can get something going.
That's something that's possible, okay. Okay, thank you. Councillor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thank you for coming tonight. I truly appreciate, as you mentioned, that you do a great job and you're a strong advocate for your members and so we appreciate that you're here tonight. And you mentioned that you care about the employees and the residents of Grand Prairie and I can tell you wholeheartedly that this council and our administration also cares for the residents and the employees of the city of Grand Prairie. You mentioned that municipal services are for the good of all, but in my opinion, they're not for the good of all at all costs. And at some point, administration, I can guarantee you, has done a very thorough job when they bring things to council as opportunities and there's nothing that's off the side of their desk when it is something as important as daycare. This has been thought through very thoroughly and people that are here because they're concerned about the daycare for their children, absolutely appreciate that concern. As a mother, I know what it's like to try to find daycare. At the time when this daycare was established, the city was filling a void in the community. And right now, there is multiple daycares that have vacancies. I don't think that the city at all times has to fill all voids. And at that time, I appreciate when the city filled this need and in turn, city employees became members of yours. I think that ultimately, this council's goal is to represent all residents and all citizens. And I think that our working relationship with organizations such as yourself needs to continue to be strong, but at some point, you are representing your members and we're representing the residents. And so there's a fine line there. So I appreciate you coming tonight and I thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Thanks councillor Clayton. I don't see anybody else in the queue for questions, councillor. Sorry, Ron, did you have something further?
Yeah, and then thank you, thank you councillor Clayton. You talked about, you know, originally, you know, the service was brought in because there was a need, you know, and we talked to, I talked to councillor Friesen, you know, that control and also trying, you know, trying to be responsive to the community. I think, you know, one of the things to keep in mind is the future and, you know, at this time, there's ebbs and flows and changes in demographics, but we could well be in a situation where, you know, the service is provided again and the city may have to step in. And I think, you know, perhaps might have an ideological difference on some things, you know, but at the end of the day, you know, these services, you know, all of us are going to have children, you know, mine are, yeah, they don't need daycare, they just need money transfers, but, so, but yeah, it's, again, I would say it's coming back to that public good and, you know, at the end of the day, I think it is for the good of all and I think this service is very important, but thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
I don't see any other council members in the queue with any questions, so really appreciate you being here this evening and the delegation, appreciate the offer of partnership to analyze some of these scenarios if administration or council feels that that might be relevant and appreciate the work that your members do each and every day in our community. Thank you. Okay, so as I mentioned at the start of our session, this evening delegation opportunity is an opportunity for people who've registered ahead of time. We have an open session at the start of our council meeting earlier in the after, sorry, in the late afternoon. So we actually have two opportunities for people to present. I appreciate that there's probably a number of QP members, I'm looking and I can see a bunch of different disciplines in the room. And so appreciate and acknowledge that you're all here this evening in support of your local. If there's anybody that wishes to address council at another point, we have this opportunity at every regular city council meeting. Again, that afternoon opportunity is open to anybody who wishes to come forward. It's almost an open mic session. The evening one is ones for who have scheduled ahead of time and so I would acknowledge that we've run our course through the three delegations that had scheduled for this evening and thank you all for attending tonight. We will close the delegation portion of our agenda and we'll move on to council member reports and I can appreciate that all of you that are here this evening, you're more than welcome to stay and listen to the council member reports or if you wish to leave and you have other things to do, that's okay too, but we will continue on with the rest of the balance of our agenda. I will look to councillor Clayton, who I believe had a report from Community Futures of Grand Prairie and Region. Councillor Clayton?
Sorry, thank you, Mayor Given. I had the opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of council and the mayor at recent Community Futures Symposium. It was a conference that was two and a half days inviting all community future organizations from across the province in attendance. The theme was leading the way and throughout the evening that I attended, we, there were six awards for everything from Community Futures Volunteer of the Year to Community Future Organization of the Year. Across the province, there was various people highlighted and celebrated and overall, I ran into people with familiar faces and people I knew and everybody was very thankful for what the local community futures agency has done, but also what for the city provided for that conference. So I just wanted to update everybody on that. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Councillor Blackburn, I think you have the airport commission?
I do, thank you, Mayor Given. We had our, our meeting on the 18th of September and it was a pleasure to be back there after, after some absence and I just wanted to talk about a couple of the things that were raised to us as interesting points. Passenger movements are down, year-to-date, 1.9% over 2018 with, still with 200 and nearly 251,000 passengers. July is down 13% and June was down 8%. So we are seeing a trend down and due to the local economy and poor construction weather as well contribute to a lack of passengers. We've learned that the winter schedules for both WestJet and Air Canada have been received effective October 28th and the number of flights remain unchanged. It's perhaps the times change, but the number of flights in and out to Calgary and to Edmonton have not changed. Capital plan includes 29 projects with a budget of about $6.4 million and with the construction season winding down, most projects are nearing completion and under budget, I'm pleased to say. I think that pretty much covers the highlights. We did learn a few more things, but more insignificant than the ones I've mentioned here.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Councillor Bressi, I think you had an update from Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Partnership.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. We met last, we met last week and a lot of our conversation revolved around the website and make, and just getting assurance of what kind of steps are in place to make sure that if all of a sudden, tens of thousands of people are asking G-Prep, what do I do because this train here got in accidents? We want to make sure the website can handle that. So we had a lot of conversation about that. A reminder to council that came up, the MGA has been changed so that all of you need to get some training on the role of elected officials in an emergency. I have already done that training once, I get to do it for a second time and boy, is that exciting. But just to keep your eyes out for the G-Prep opportunity to do that in person. There's also an online portal you can do that I could get you information if you'd rather do it online. And then the last thing that's relevant to councils, we talked a lot about summer's evacuations and kind of the learning opportunity that came out of there of how overburdened municipalities in our region, especially the city, were having to care for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people for weeks on, weeks on end. And one of the things that G-Prep did for, is we set a service level expectation for the organization, say, in an emergency social service context, what do we, what do we expect G-Prep to deliver to people who are here in town? And we set some limits on our emergency social services. We said that the service level that we're going to set in our community is 72 hours to 14 days. That's, that's basically saying that we don't expect to be responsible for caring for evacuees for more than 14 days. They might still be in our community, but after 14-ish days, then we expect the province to come in and their people to manage it instead of our people. Something that is included in the service level expectation though, is that we did give authority to the director of emergency management, so the person who's on point at the time, we did give them wide latitude to adjust that service level as needed so it's not a legalistic, in 14 days, sorry, our people are leaving the emergency center and not helping anymore, but it was, that was just our way to really clearly say that our expectation is we help out for a couple of weeks and then somebody else has to step in. Our city staff can't carry the burden for longer than that.
Great, thanks very much councillor Bressi. Councillor Clayton, I think you had Grand Prairie Regional Recreation Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. On behalf of myself and councillor Plott and councillor Bressi, I'll bring this report forward. We attended the regional recreation meeting. This time it was hosted by Beaver Lodge, which was great and Chair Jody Cocotelli-Bicris did a great job. There was a few things that took place at that meeting. The municipal partners at the table provided an update, but we also had a couple of decisions going forward. There was a motion that was passed to extend the, the organization that is currently in a contract to do surveys and collect information across the region. Their contract was extended as well. There was a request for decision that was passed for the administrative coordinator. Both of these positions have come at no cost implication to the municipality as the money was already, other through grants or support of the municipalities. This isn't additional financial implications to the municipality. It was more, as we've now collected a thorough inventory of regional recreational assets across the region, we've also proposed a process for regional recreational partners that are potentially looking for support from the region. There's a process established and now we're at the sort of stage where we're looking to survey the users. The users were surveyed once, there's a need now to survey them again because as demographics change and, and the composition of the regional recreational players change, the information needed to be updated. So, so going forward, there may be a change in the structure of this organization, it's yet to be seen. However, for now, we'll continue with the, the work going forward with these two, the administrative role as well as the contractor. And we agreed that for the next meeting, there will be a few more sort of deliverables discussed at the meeting and we look for more information, but it was a very thorough meeting, good, open, honest discussion of what this committee looks like going forward and whether or not politicians need to be there, whether it should be solely an advocacy group and sort of what that looks like. So look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Clayton and your colleagues, councillor Bressi and councillor Plott, and I appreciate you drew the short straw to present that report. I think our next up was councillor Blackburn with Grand Spirit Foundation.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, the Grand Spirit Foundation Committee, Management Committee met late last week and a couple of things of interest. Grand Spirit Foundation is assisting at the Support of Housing Project, providing assistance with evictions and also with building maintenance advice. So there's been a contract signed for that and, and we've already had some experience in providing both services. It's going very well and I think it's helping out the folks at the, at the facility quite Regarding our capacity and the facilities that we have, there is a needs assessment Week of October 14th is going to begin the public consultation process of the study and so there may be people who will want to keep an eye out for that. And we expect that the final project completion date will be in November. So that'll be interesting to see from a third-party perspective, what the, the capacity is currently and what our needs are. I would say that for the most part, we're, we're quite full in, in all of our facilities throughout the area that Grand Spirit is responsible for. And that's about all I had for this meeting.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. Councillor Bressi had the inner-city forum on social policy.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. While the inner-city forum on social policy had a conference call on... Great, thank you Mayor Given. While the Inner City Forum on Social Policy had a conference call on la- last week and the topic of conversation was FCSS funding, so Family Community Social Services fun, funding and provincial advocacy and basically giving each other an update on what are municipalities were up to for advocacy and what we've been hearing and something for council to hear, something that we've heard from a few MLAs is concern over FCSS funding and asking if FCSS is a form of red tape that should be cut is what a few MLAs have said to members. So Inner City Forum policy or not what MLAs have said, but what a few MLAs have wondered to members and the impression that those for, social policy forum members got was that just some educations needed. That wasn't necessarily opposition to what FCS is accomplishing, but just some education. So it's really great. FCSS is a way for the province to disperse money on a local level to make sure local priorities are being hit. And I'd also suggest that because they're doing it through municipalities, there's, it saves the province from having a very large bureaucracy of its own. That would largely duplicate what we're doing at the local level anyways. So FCSS is probably actually reducing a lot of red tape in this province and cutting it could create a lot more red tape while also creating less resources for actual local priorities. So if it happens to come up, the efficiencies that it creates is something that's worth mentioning when you talk to government.
Thanks very much councillor Bressi. And South Peace Regional Archives Society Board councillor Plot?
Thanks Mayor Given. Couple of highlights to note, I guess to start off on a real positive note. Alyssa Curry, our executive director, has completed her master's, so we have a little congratulations for her. Josephine Salas, a lady that works with the archives, is working on a special requirement for the, for the future home of the archives and what that could look like. As I think we've all talked about, the archives may be outgrowing their space. Currently, they have a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in their building funds. So they've got a long way to go to get the building fund, but they are they are starting that. They've got a Friends of the Archive that we talked about as well and how we're going to move forward with the Friends of the Archives. On September fourth, we had a little bit of an excitement moment down at the, the museum and the archives when we had somebody show up with a, ended up being a toy gun, but it was a gun. So the building was on lockdown for a few minutes. It was a scary four minutes for the staff, but they got through, but it did flush out some, some emergency preparedness and some protocol that they, they're going to update. And lastly, next Friday, October the fourth, it's the Archives at Work. So it's starting at the museum next Friday at three-thirty. If you can attend, that'd be great. I think we got something in our calendar invite, but our guests would love to see us there. And yeah, we had a great meeting and lots of conversation and always, always a pleasure for those of you haven't been on the board. They always make cinnamon buns and there's good coffee. So throwing it out there.
I have a feeling that was encouraging some people to place a number one on that in their annual council survey of appointments and committees. So before we move on to council roundtable, I would ask if we could have a motion to receive the delegations presentations for information. We could probably do them on the bus. I'm not sure there was business arising from any of them specifically. If there was, happy to receive any other motions that might arise, but we could also do them altogether. And I've got a list of people in the queue and councillor Clayton was first.
Sure. Would you like them done individually? Sure. I would move that council accept all presentations from Grand Prairie Fastball, Chris Arcand, as well as QP for information.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody in the queue. Then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and we'll start our council member roundtable with councillor Bressi.
Thank you Mayor Given. A few things I'll highlight is, first of all, I just really want to give a public shout out to our transportation department. And we had the bypass for a matter of about two days before I noticed a very dramatic change in terms of potholes filled and lines painted and, or sorry, and lanes. Anyways, potholes, lines, sweeping. It was all done in a couple of days and I noticed a very dramatic difference. And so I just wanted to give a very public shout out to our great QP members and their management that made that, made that happen. A few other things I will highlight is I went to an interesting, I went to an interesting meeting last week with a few residents who are very concerned about our temporary transition site and our supervised consumption site and think more should be done. And they're deciding to organize to do more and what they're organizing is how do they get residents who are working as volunteers to actually connect with people that are maybe really in need of connection, just on a human level? In hopes of providing them some dignity, providing them some hope, providing them some practical support, but also how can they as citizens, not paid staff, help connect people to services, to professional services in our community? So it was a really cool thing. A big topic of discussion was what are they going to call it? And there was no resolution there, so I don't really know what to call it right now. But they're going to be meeting another week or two and some of the people around the table, I think there's a lot of promise in this. So I hope that this initiative you guys hear about again. And yeah, I'll leave, I'll leave it at that.
Thanks very much councillor Bressi. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much Mayor Given. I just got a couple of updates for my roundtable reports. Alberta Bilingual Municipality Association, we're going to be having a meeting next Saturday morning, a breakfast meeting. The president will be in Grand Prairie and he called the meeting to meet with me. As well, the same thing goes with the Francophone Francophile Cities Network. I'll be having a phone conversation in the near future with that as well. This last few weeks have been pretty exciting for myself. First time since I've been elected to attend the citizenship ceremony and be up front and meet and greet the six hundred and forty new citizens of Canada from thirty-two different countries. And twenty-five percent of that six hundred and number is from out of town. So the Peace Regions, as far away as High Level, Peace River Manning. And that was pretty exciting to see the comfort of them signing their name and now being Canadian citizens. Most of them spent at least five to six years because of the requirements of the law to stay in Canada. And so now they are contained, Canadian citizens. I also had the opportunity to go to a seventy-fifth birthday party for a longtime city councillor, Ms. Helen Rice, and we kind of had to keep that a secret from her, but it was a success. And anyhow, that was something that brought a lot of joy to myself as well. And the next one was the Best Bar None, which is a reward system for the bars put on the ALCB. And they've got some other letters attached to their names now because of a name change with cannabis, but they're running a really good show and I just want to shout out to the people that are actually members locally that have passed the exams and, and qualified. And yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you Mayor Given. It's been a very busy couple of weeks. I actually don't think last term, and I know this term, I never had opportunity to fill two pages of events. So I'm going to, since councillor Thiessen's not here, I'll just take his time. And so, yeah, no, I apologize. I have a few things that I'm going to mention that maybe were unique to myself. I had an opportunity to represent council and met with Minister Doug Schweitzer, which was a discussion on rural crime. It was a great conversation with all the partners from around the region, municipal leaders, et cetera. Good conversation on what the Solicitor General and, and going forward, rural crime could potentially mean to our urban municipality. We also discuss potential funding formulas as the government now institutes an opportunity and a discussion template for rural municipal partners to potentially have to pay a portion of, of the funding that's applicable to them. I also stuck around and attended the Rural Crime Public Town Hall. I typically don't go to a lot of rural town hall meetings and so this was an opportunity to sit and listen and, and there was great vigorous conversation. So that was a, a definitely a, a unique opportunity for myself. I also attended and represented council at the Grand Prairie Regional College President Don Natchuck tribute. I can't say enough about this gentleman. He truly, as a past border governor and, and as a councillor, is somebody that this region and, and every region and community that he represents will truly miss. The man has been a leader. He's, he's inspirational. He's a, a passionate steward for anybody that works with him in any region that he represents. So Don will truly be missed and, and it was a good evening of, of looking back and celebration and, and of course, a little bit of jest made at Don. Because if you know him, you'll recognize that he has a great sense of humor. So that was a nice evening as well. I also, with, I know councillor O'Toole was there for sure. I don't know if anybody else was there. But I attended the tenth annual Big Hearts for Big Kids event. It was a fundraiser for the Grand Prairie Youth Shelter, the Sunrise House. In the ten years, the amount of money that this event has raised led by our own Taneele Towns is, is simply astounding. That evening alone, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was raised in one event, in one evening from, from our community and and, and the work that that committee, that volunteer group, Taneele herself, her family has done to support this event from when it started at, at Jackpot to where it is now, where the tickets don't even go online. They're simply sold out through sponsorship and through people that continue to attend every year. So kudos to that organization, to Taneele herself, her family, to the, to the entity of the Sunrise House and for the work that they've done and, and congrats on a great evening. I think that the other events were attended by other people. The one that I'll mention that I attended with councillor Plot, the STARS event, which was called Calling All Allies and councillor Blackburn was there as well. It's one of the kickoffs to their capital campaign. The STARS organization needs to replace their entire fleet of helicopters, which I'm sure you can imagine isn't an easy feat. Helicopters aren't inexpensive. And so they're down the path for a big campaign. There was great statistics and a great video of, of the work that they've done with our region as well as across the province. So thank you to the STARS organization for updating us on what's happening with them. And for now, I'll leave that. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. Councillor Menhass?
So I think the few, the few of them is already mentioned. I'm not going to take too much time to do it, but I was from the city proclaim did for the Small Business Week, starting on what day it was? I don't remember, but anyhow, that was very great and I was learned out there. I think Wade was there and Dylan and Junus and we were all three there and to me to learn there was this time, I was surprised we had, I thought it was only two breweries and there was four breweries and also they're making started making the whiskey here, you know, in Grand Prairie, which is a great tour community to just use local. And it was a very great startup and there was lots of people show up there that morning. And the second one, the Don Nenjek, Jackie already mentioned it. He was a great man and he's the longest CEO surviving in Grand Prairie and marvelous job for Grand Prairie, bringing it from college to university. He put a lot of effort on into it. And also three things he said and it's kind of, he made the joke, but it was true. He said, if CEO leaves, the administration board goes down, then they get blamed to the board was not good organized. And if he leaves, the board carries on and up. That's mean that board and CEO, they were both working very nice, all the things. And it's true, you know, like if things just going smooth up, not going up and down when you leave and come, goes. But it was lots of fun there that night and lots of people know and lots of people, his recognition was great and I hope we can fill that gap. But they'll take time.
Thanks councillor Menhass. Councillor Friesen?
Thanks Mayor Given. I'll just mention a couple that haven't been so far. There was a, a great example of how a community group can just decide to do something. Bill Nash and the Mature People Swim Club. I can't remember what they're called offhand. Sorry? Anyway, for, for the hundred and fiftieth, hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Alberta, they decided that a hundred and fifty people would swim a hundred and fifty laps and they would raise some money for swim clocks and those were put up at Eastlake Centre and Morris Financial Group was a great supporter in that as well. So just a, a cool thing that, that when someone just gets an idea and goes for it, that, that's just awesome when that happens in this community. And Bill and his group certainly did that. And I had the opportunity, I believe I was the only councillor at the Anti-Hate Conference on Saturday. And that was really a remarkable day, I felt. The Alberta Civil Liberties Research Centre had three speakers come in. They spoke about human rights and it was very much about racism, but it's impossible to talk about one vulnerable, vulnerable, vulnerable section of our community and how to support and uphold rights of that section without it having a positive impact on all vulnerable sections of our communities. So it just was a wonderful day of some, some history, some advocacy pieces. And just a bit of facts around exactly what human rights in Alberta and indeed in Canada looks like. And I commend the Volunteer Services Bureau for taking the opportunity to conduct that. And there were, I would think about a hundred people in attendance and lots of faces from around the region as well as right here in the city. So just a fantastic day and I'd love to see something like that again and potentially go a couple of days because it was a lot of information for one day. Thanks very much.
Thanks councillor Friesen. Councillor Plot?
Thanks Mayor Given. Noticing that councillor Clayton has broke the new time for how long it took to do a council roundtable. So hopefully councillor Thiessen's watching because he'll want to redeem himself. Anyways, a couple of events that I want to highlight last week, I think there was a couple of council members that attended the Chamber Small Business Week kickoff, the breakfast on, on what, last Wednesday. Also last Friday, councillors O'Toole, Clayton, Menhass, myself got to be part of the opening ceremonies and Friesen, sorry, for the Grand Prairie Storm Home Opener. It was nice to see the one, two, one in the shootout and, and they've now got a four and one record on the year. So they're off, the boys are off to a good start. And they had good attendance and speaking to Erica Hind before the game, they were hoping for about a thousand, twelve hundred people and I think they had sixteen hundred. So it was a good start to the season. So way to go, boys. And way to go. The other thing, the, the highlight, I think over the last two weeks, and it sounds like we've all been pretty busy, was the the Signature Falls Neighborhood Association had an event last Saturday. And I went, went on behalf, as, as we built a few homes in that community and have always had a soft spot for the community. So we went. And it was really cool to see that basketball court. I know there was a seventy thousand dollar touch to the community association and a lot of work went into it. I want to go shout out to Ted Martin and his team of, of volunteers that put that together. I believe the city's contribution was a total of seventeen thousand, five hundred. So it just shows how well something like that can be leveraged if the community gets involved. And what I loved the most about it was just seeing how many people were using it. And the problem they're having, which was interesting to hear, was that it's getting used so much, there's times when they can't actually use the court. So probably a really good, good news story for a park in Grand Prairie. So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks very much councillor Plot. Councillor Blackburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. I'll, the things on my list have already been mentioned by others and so I'm not going to repeat things. So instead I'll mention something that I attended, not representing council, but certainly something that's worthwhile in the community. And that was opening night for Grand Prairie Life Theatre's twenty-seventh, sorry, fifty-seventh season. And what was significant about this opening was that it was the first production by GPLT at the New Community Theatre in the Saint John Paul II Catholic School where there's a, I think it's about a three hundred seat facility. And the production team made very, very good use of this new facility and so it was, it was a pleasure to go and, and see that. And then I'll just remind folks that this weekend is Alberta Culture Days. And there are a number of arts and culture organizations in the city that are, are featuring some free and some paid events that people I'm sure would enjoy and so to, to check out the opportunities there and take part.
Thanks very much councillor Blackburn. I appreciate that there's a number of members of council that are heading off to the AMA convention and I appreciate those of you that are driving would be happy to get on the road. So I will just take fifteen to twenty, well, maybe forty-five minutes to make my presentation. I'll just provide a brief update on a couple of things. It was my pleasure to join Director Miller and a couple of the members of city staff at the open house that the Disabled Transportation Society held for their members. It was intended to be their dissolution meeting, but they weren't actually able to get enough members to attend the meeting to be able to have a vote to dissolve. But I want to commend Director Miller for being there to answer a number of questions that people had. The majority of questions that arose were really about the service going forward and less about the dissolution of the society. And so I appreciate that the majority of DTS users were really looking forward. users were really looking forward and looking forward to working with the city on that service. I, later that week, was in Lethbridge at the Midsize City Mayors and CAOs caucus meeting. We had the pleasure of having Minister of Municipal Affairs, Casey Madu, come and join us, as well as a local MLA from Lethbridge. And the following day, we actually had the Premier stop by for about 45 minutes, which was a pretty significant amount of his time to be able to come by. Certainly appreciated the opportunity to discuss how midsize cities could work with the government. And in particular, I had a chance, on behalf of the rest of my colleagues there, to give our endorsement, the Midsize City Mayor's endorsement of the government's discussion about the police costing framework. And so shared that message that, as a municipality that pays 90% of the cost of policing in our community, that we appreciate the government's proposal that would see those municipalities that aren't currently required to pay, to pay up to at a maximum of 70% of the cost of policing. And so was happy to be able to share that, I know that's been a priority of our council, and to share that message with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and with the Premier himself was a pleasure. And it was great to see that that caucus is getting some recognition with provincial government. I also had the pleasure of helping kick off the Terry Fox Run down in Musquesseeby Park. And myself and Dr Manuel had a presentation and meeting with the provincial panel that is reviewing supervised consumption services across the province prior to their public open house. Appreciated the support of administration, ensuring we're well-prepped to go into that meeting, and share a little bit of the community context. Obviously, council members are well-aware that we've been hearing from our community concerns around general social disorder and a number of the issues like we heard here this evening. And we thought it was helpful to provide some context about recent changes at Rotary House and other organisations, and how that really has had an impact in the way the community is seeing homelessness. And other than that, out of respect again for my council members that are on their way to Edmonton this evening, I think we'll call our meeting adjourned.